Well, good evening. Today is July 19th, 2021. We are back, I think, for the first time in July, aren't we, Carolins? This is the first meeting we've had in July. We took the first meeting off, which is a tradition. But we're glad that you're here today. Every time we meet, I'm just kind of amazed that we're part of this organization and that you guys have asked us to do what we do. So we appreciate that. It's been the tradition of this board and boards across the country. We do a few things before we get started. First of all, we're gonna have a prayer from our chaplain. These are called solemnizing prayers. By definition, it's a legal term. That means that they're for the commissioners. They're not for you. They're for us. What we do, we take very seriously and we seek wisdom as we make sometimes very difficult decisions. And then we'll have a pledge. And so commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Commissioners. Lord, thank for the privilege to be here tonight, Lord. We thank for our county commissioners, Lord, and we pray as we have this meeting tonight, you give them the wisdom they need to make the right decisions, Lord. I thank for the hard work they do, Lord, to have the candidate we have, Lord. I pray blessings upon them, Lord, God, and direct this meeting with them tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being and justice in its cause.
Thank you, Chaplain Taylor. Always good to see you. Appreciate you being here. We've got one added item to the agenda that Manager Church sent for us, and that is consent agenda addition, a memo for consideration. It's for the ETA disaster request memo. Y'all receive this. We have a motion to approve adding that to consent.
I move.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any other additions or deletions?
Where are you going? Oh, you're gonna do that on consent?
Yep. Any other additions or deletions? If not, then do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approval of the minutes of June 21. Motion in a second, please.
So moved.
In a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, motion in a second.
Saying.
All right, Mike, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. April, oh, there's Craig. Craig, welcome. Glad you're on here with us. All right, let's see. Do we have anyone for public comment? No one signed up? Okay. We'll move on then to item number three, a presentation for access road for animal shelter. So, welcome. Good to see you again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Back in June, we talked about moving forward with the access road to the animal shelter and the dog adoption center. And what we want to talk about today, at that time, we had some changes that we needed to make and to get that complete and connected with what was being proposed for the dog adoption center. We've been talking about this project for some time. So we're now at a point of finalizing that. We've got it ready and we're ready to go out to bids with that project. So if you'll recall, the existing site, the convenience center that was there was closed and removed. The dog adoption center has begun construction. That's underway. The James River side is complete and there is no city water currently to the animal shelter. It's on a well. They do have city sewer, though, and there was no city water and sewer available to the dog adoption center when it, when construction started. So what we have, what was proposed originally was constructing a new roadway, and this goes back several years, from Julian Road to serve James River and extend through to Corporate Center Drive. We've talked about a lot of things to happen along that roadway. Some are happening, some are not happening. But in addition to constructing the road, we talked about putting a new water line through that connects through that new section of street and extending the sewer line, which is currently, let's see, I can show you with the mouse. It's just in this area along the stream. There's a sewer line in that area, but we're going to extend that sewer line. So this is the proposed project. And the way we have this planned is we have a base bid for the project that would include the roadway from Julian Road down past the second driveway, which will be the driveway to the existing animal shelter. Then, as an alternate bid for the roadway, we'll bid the remainder of that road from that point through to Corporate Center Drive. The base bid for the sewer will include constructing the sewer main, which you'll see on the plan in orange, from the existing sewer line up to serve the dog adoption center. Then, for the base bid on the water, we will begin at Julian Road, extend the water line down as far as the street's going, and that will serve both the dog adoption center and the animal shelter. And then we'll have an alternate bid to extend the water line all the way through the new road. So basically, our base bid is the street and water on the front end from Julian Road with the sewer, and then the base bid will be to complete the road and the water on the So the items that have, that are included for the dog adoption center and the animal shelter, both facilities will get a two-inch water meter, which is what they needed for their connection. The meter will be part of the project that we're bidding. The RPZ, which is their reduced pressure principal backflow preventer, and the connection from the meter to the buildings will be provided by the DAC building contractor. The sewer line for the dog adoption center from the street at the right-of-way to the building will be by the building contractor. And the building contractor will also be connecting to the driveway cuts. We'll have a driveway cut in the curb, because that street will have curb and gutter. We'll have a driveway cut, and they will be tying both driveways into that road. So what we're proposing is that if the commissioners approve going out to bid, we will advertise for bids as soon as we can get that in the paper, which will be later this week, for a bid opening on August 24th, expecting that the commissioners would vote to award a contract at their September 16th meeting. And then we will begin contract execution, have a pre-construction meeting, and hope that we could begin construction around November 1st.
I think you said that the existing building has sewer but doesn't have water. It's on well.
Correct.
And my thought is that animal shelters need a lot of water, don't they?
I would expect so.
So this is, this is really preventative, because if that well goes out, we're kind of in a, I was gonna say in a mess. I guess I just did. But that may not be a good thing over the animal shelter. So this, this is a good thing, extending water.
Yes.
Down there. Okay. Any other questions? So what you need is just an authorization, right now, an authorization for us to go out to bid on this.
Yes, just to advertise for bids, not, not to authorize the construction.
Right.
At this point.
Right. Any questions?
Just curious, because I know this has been an ongoing thing. Does any of this water and sewer can be paid for with the COVID funds?
It's a strong possibility.
Judy, any questions? All right. Do we have a motion then to authorize Rowan County and County Manager to go out to bid?
So moved.
All right. We got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good to see you again. All right, next item is a presentation by ADW Architects for, bring us back up to speed on Westin Plaza modernization. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Bob Law would be here presenting with me today, but he had a family death that he needed to attend to. So he's, does apologize for missing this important meeting. But today's kind of a fun day, because we haven't been here probably a little over a year. And what we want to do today is kind of recap of what we've been doing last year and talk about where we're going ahead for this project. Some of these slides you've actually seen before, so I'll kind of go through that very quickly. But last year, we actually took the project all the way through 100% of the schematic design phase. And that means all the documents were in a package. We did site civil drawings. We had MEP input as well as narratives, and we did architectural drawings. We also had our cost estimator, professional cost estimator, did a cost estimate on these documents. Project actually stopped right before he was finished, so you all did not see the actual cost estimate. You will see that today. We were mentioned by the commissioners and the county manager to go ahead and get a revised cost. As you all know, that cost increases over the last year have really, really went up. And we will show you what your project is with today's dollars. But that's towards the end of the presentation. So if I'm going too slow, just let me know, because some of these slides you all seen before. It's really gonna be kind of a recap. Today, we are presenting and talking about really two areas, the agricultural meeting hall and then the agricultural center office area, kind of towards the back of the existing mall area. Again, here is the meeting hall area and here is the office area. The meeting hall area is about 45,000 square feet, and then the agricultural office area is about 18,500 square feet for a total internal renovation of around 63,000 square feet. Again, just to kind of recap, this is a floor plan of the meeting hall area. This is to be the main entrance. This area would really be your post, pre, pre and post-function space. It's kind of where they, you have the round ceiling in there of the existing Belk area. We have designed a 1,000-seat meeting hall area that could be divided into sections, so you could have smaller meetings. There are also plenty of restrooms in the facility, as well as small breakout conference rooms, as well as a warming kitchen. There's also another area here for pre and pulse function space, as well as outdoor covered storage, I mean, storage, outdoor covered patio space. So if there is a wedding in here or an events or something like that, it's, it is protected by the rain. This is showing the different departments and the agricultural center, the main lobby. Everything is kind of connected by this lobby. In the blue is one department, and I'm just kind of quickly talk about that. But anyways, that's, that comprises about 18,000 square feet. You all seen this before. The exterior views, again, these were approved by the commissioners last year, and these were adopted for our schematic design phase. And quickly talk about that. So the articulation and the architecture of the facility is a more kind of a rustic, kind of a, I won't call it, not, not really true, modern architecture, but a little bit more traditional in its nature with stone veneer, leaving some of the existing brick that's already on the Belk building, and using some of the hardy board panels with a new entrance piece right here, as well as a cover drop-off area to get into the main entrance of the meeting hall. And this picture kind of dictates what's going on here as you're coming through. You can start to see on the right side is that covered area. And again, you all seen these last year. I'm just quickly kind of talk about that. This view is the lawn area. Be great to see either some weekend concerts or something like that. But this is the outdoor classroom area that the agricultural center has requested in their program. So we actually show that, a little pavilion for that area. Again, here's the shot of coming in with the drop-off area, the covered canopy, as well as the main entrance to get into the agricultural meeting hall area. This view, I don't think you've seen this one. I think one commissioner requested to see what that could look like. This is the main entrance to the Belk. Again, we took some of the articulation from the main area, left the brick veneer in its place, and used some of that darker hardy board on the outside. So it does kind of blend in what we were doing at the main entrance to the meeting hall area. And as we're more towards the, I'd say, the terminus of the J.C. Penney's corner here, this is your existing restaurant. Again, we would do some new signage here, a new entrance into this area, as well as the main mall area with a, with a brand-new entrance, as well as a traffic circle to get into that area. Again, you can see the traffic circle, maybe the great place to showcase the flags, monument or something like that. We don't know yet until we get your opinion as we move the project forward. So that kind of concludes the exterior renovations. Again, our package, our schematic design was based on that. We actually looked at different alternates for pricing purposes, and I'll talk about that in here in a moment. I believe you have not seen the interior views. So today, we would like to kind of just get your input on that, and I will talk a little bit slower, slower on that as far as the interior renovations. Get you focused here, this would be the main entrance from the parking lot where the existing Belk entrance is. We did leave that barrel vault in to give it that warm look. We have a wood look ceiling on the barrel vault. We also started taking some of the articulation on the outside of the facility with that stone veneer look to it, get that little bit more rustic look. These could be sound panels. Where it says signage is basically just a placeholder for any type of signs or any type of memorabilia or anything that you might want to showcase in this main lobby area. You'll see from the next slide. This is looking down the other pre and pulse function space. We started to carving out some nice, really small meeting areas with a translucent panel to give you some visibility, but also give you a little bit of quiet space. So if you do want to have a quick meeting or something and not go into the breakout, into the meeting hall, you can use this to interact and have a small conversation. You can start to see the identity to each of these meeting hall areas. Again, we can do signage, call it anything that you want, any type of, if it's A, B, or C, or if it's a dedicated name of a, of a meeting hall itself. But you see the articulation of the ceiling is very similar to the main entrance of the facility. This view is looking back towards the outside. You can start to see that covered canopy area. It'd be great for outdoor events. We also accommodated and designed for a operable wall that's all glass that actually could fold up, so you kind of get that outdoor, indoor look into the facility. So just imagine a nice conference here, and you can go outside, you can go inside. So we wanted to make the space as flexible as possible. And you can also start to see some of that translucent panels with these little L codes of smaller, I'd say, more intimate spaces for meetings. Here's the look from a, I'm gonna call it a secondary corridor. Again, we kind of had that same concept with the translucent panels, a small breakout area. This would be an entrance into the restrooms. This is a view, again, from the mall. If you're coming from the right side, would be the parking lot outside of Belk. As you come left, you had actually entered into the mall. Think about the possibilities, do an interactive TV screens. Maybe it talks about the county and what type of events that happens here. Maybe it even has events of what's going on in the inside of the facility. So think about technology as we move this project forward. We can really do some really cool things with technology nowadays. You start to see signage, as well as the identity to each of these meeting areas. So as you come into the, the main meeting area, again, it seats around 1,000 people, and that would be tables and seats. You could probably seat, if you just did seats, probably 1,500 or so, maybe even a little bit more than that of the folks. But the idea is, again, to make it as flexible as possible. Operable partitions, acoustical partitions that would break off the room. This is showing it, what it would look like open up. Again, we kept the existing columns in place to try to reduce costs as much as possible. Carpet on the floor, new ceilings, and again, some kind of a coffer ceiling with some can lights. So we want to give you different light levels in the space. We also want to give you different flexibility to make the space large for larger events, as also we want to give you flexibility for smaller events. Here's another view, what it could be, look like, the warming kitchens back here. Again, these are acoustical wall panels. We could do some signage on here. Table, you could do some, warming kitchen could set up for their displays for food. Just gives you a lot of flexibility in the space. This is looking at, again, the space all open. Here's a partition here. There would be a partition here. We want overhead screens. These would be rolled up, all operable, and so if you have a large event, you'll be able to see what's going on on the screen. This could be a smaller venue here, again, thinking about the placements of screens, audio, visual, and things like that. We do have an audiovisual consultant that we would work with the county and go through that as we move the project in design development. Just another view of another open space. So this is the main lobby of the agricultural center office area. We wanted to blend the architecture of what's going on in the agricultural meeting since they'll be using that facility a lot. As you come in, again, carpet to kind of subdue some of the sound, that same articulation, that wood look, give it that warm look. And then this could be a mural, could be painted, it could be wall covering, something that really pay tributes back to what's going on in this facility with agricultural farming and things like that. So it could be, we call that a super graphic, something really fun. Again, this is just a placeholder. If you don't like it, that's fine. We can definitely work with the county on, on some type of graphics, what makes the most sense for that facility. And then each department has their own entrance doorways into their departments. So that'd be really coming off the main mall into their main lobby space. So what's this all about? How much this is gonna cost? That's the, that's the real story we want to hear today. But before we do that, we'd looked at the project in not so much phases, but we looked at the project as alternates, to break down the call, the total construction costs. And I'm gonna go through that with this map, and we may have to kind of go backwards on this as, as we move forward. But so in base bid, when I show you the cost estimates on the next slide, you will see base bid is the meeting hall area, again, about 45,000 square feet. Also in base bid, and that's all interior renovation, also in base bid would be, be the office area, which is about 16,000 square feet, and that's all interior. You will see a law with base bid, I'm sorry, as a separate line item, is the NRCS office expansion. That may come in this project, it may not. If, if, if it does, we do have a price in there. If they want to add price, it is a federal agency. If they want to add price for the project, then they know exactly how much that's gonna cost. We did break that out for you, so you can look at that. Let's talk about alternate one. Alternate one is taking the outside of the building of Belk only and renovating the existing facade. So we would have a small canopy here for the new entrance. We would have that outdoor covered pavilion area, as we showed you in the renderings. That facade would be renovated on Belk, as well as that facade terminating back to that main, to the kind of that secondary entrance into the mall. So that would be an alternate two cost estimate, and you'll see that. Alternate three is really mostly just site work, except for this little outdoor classroom area. So the site work would be new asphalt, new landscaping, new islands, to really enhance what you have here now, because right now you have a parking lot that's not a whole lot of life to it. The parking lot itself is failing. There's no trees, there's no islands to stop people from driving quickly through your parking lot. So alternate three would be redoing this parking drive, all of this parking area, this whole drive, all the way up to this line. Okay? And that would be landscaping, parking, as well as the, the little pavilion here. Alternate three would be doing all the parking, the new traffic circle, as well as cosmetically renovating the exterior of this space here, where the restaurants, where the restaurant is here, where the main, main entrance into the mall is right here. So that would be alternate three. So just keep that in mind when we're talking about the cost assessment. If you want me to go back to this map to refer to anything, just please let me know. So it's all this said and done. The commissioners have not seen this cost estimate. This cost estimate is actually the original date done at 3/24/2020. So we talked about the base bid, so I'm gonna talk about construction costs only. Construction costs is base bid, includes the agricultural offices, meeting hall, and site prep for demonstration gardens and storage buildings. And that's $12,623,000. The NRCS offices is just an outfit for the offices. I mentioned that. That's about $356,000. Alternate number one, exterior renovations, new entry canopies at Belk only. I think, I think I mentioned that. We're just going around Belk, and that's at $1,897,000. Alternate two is parking lot, site alterations around Belk, and outdoor pavilion and classrooms, and that's $1,778,000. And then we broke out alternate three is the remaining of the parking lot and the remaining of the mall renovation at the main entrance, all the way up to J.C. Penney Building, and that's about 1.5 million. So the construction cost subtotal for all these alternates is a little over $18 million. So about 18 million two for that. When we do renovations, we always want to set aside a nice contingency in the project for any errors, omissions, or anything you see in the project, unforeseen things, yes.
Yeah. Mike?
Sure. Okay. So, so what we typically do is we set around a five, renovations, we typically set around a 5% owner construction contingency. During construction, you might have some unforeseen items in there, and, and that was around $900,000. So the total cost for this project with all these alternates is a little over 19 million. Then we have to add in owner soft costs, designer fees. So we have some borings, you have FFNE in there, furniture, equipment, and things like that. And that was equated to about 1.8 million. So total cost for, for this project, again, including all the alternates, just, just shy of 21 million. If there's no questions on that, I'm, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna show you, fast forward to today's dollars in 2021, what are we looking at? Okay. So I won't go through everything that slowly, but the base bid on that, you can see all the increases for that was $14,700,000. The NRCS offices has increased a little bit, 419,000. Alternate one, $2.4 million. Alternate two, $2.1 million. Alternate three, 1.8. And that construction cost is 21.5, plus or minus. Still have that 5% owner contingency, unforeseen things, this shy over a million dollars. So you're at 22.6 total construction cost, then the owner soft costs and designer fees, just about 1.8. So we're at 24.5. So that increased about 3.5 million in one year. And let me just quickly explain, because I think the big question is, what has increased? I think you all know that wood has increased 400%. Structural steel has increased. About anything that has steel related has increased. Anything with wood has increased. Our demolition cost has increased by 71,000. I'm not gonna read all of these, but just steel on this project from last year to this year has, has increased 68,000. Rough carpentry increased 11,000. Woodwork, casework, and things like that increased 38,000. Hardware has increased, just hardware and doors increased $18,000. That's a lot of money. Glass has increased 26,000. Just drywall, $200,000. Acoustical treatment, 70,000. Ceilings, 14. MEP is a half a million dollars has increased from last year to this year. We have talked to some contractors. Do they have a crystal ball or are things gonna change in the future? We don't know. They say sooner the better. They don't know what the forecast is in the future. They're saying that typically at the first of the year, things do go up in value. But they just don't know. We don't know either. And we have to be conservative on this as we move the project forward. It's unfortunate, but we, we're coming to this, to all of our clients right now that, hey, if you want to do a project, it's going to cost you X amount of dollars more. It's, it's disturbing for us and I know for, as the commissioners and the county, because it is a lot of money. But this, again, this is all in. You don't have to do everything now. You can, you can pick base bid, you can pick alternate one, you can pick and choose. It's a shopping list. Whatever your budget is for the project, you can manipulate it to get it within your budget. Okay? Last but not least, if this project does move forward, we quickly want to talk about the, the schedule. So we finished the schematic design, so that schedule would be waived off. We would start in design development, construction documents. If we would get approval from the county commissioners to start, we could start by August first, here in a few weeks. We could be done really with, I don't go, I'm going to go through everything on the schedule, but we could be done with our construction documents in about six and a half months. Meaning that we would get the bids, not the bids, but the cost estimate back from our, our cost estimator. And we'd be able to get county permits in March. We would respond to county permits in April and we could bid this thing in April, twenty twenty-two. So we can do this thing pretty quickly if we get approval to, to keep this project moving. And we anticipate a fourteen month construction time on this project. And it depends on, if you pick everything, this is, this is determined by all the alternates, that full twenty-four million dollars in for fourteen month. Obviously, if you're going to do less work, the construction time would come off a little bit. So we anticipate start of construction of June of twenty twenty-two, so basically next June. And we will be done completion date of July, twenty twenty-three. So that pretty much concludes where we're at, what happened last year, what happened this year. And we'd like to open up for any type of questions.
For this current day, seven nineteen twenty-one and those costs. So what happened when construction starts in June of twenty-two?
Yeah, that's great. We have included in our cost estimate, we have a ten percent escalation in there. So we already had that covered. Per, per, per our schedule, per the schedule we just showed you.
Mr. Chairman, if, if you would like, while he's been talking, I've created a little spreadsheet showing how much money we have. If y'all would like to see that, I have sent it to Randy and he can display it. If, if, if you'd like for me to do that right now. And Randy, did you? So we budgeted fifteen million debt service for, for the Westin Plaza for capital project in the budget. Based on the ongoing appropriation for savings that we have effective, well, we're already in July. So there should be approximately six million dollars in a capital reserve. And assuming that we put an additional one point seven million next year in, into this, which we've been slowly building up to it to the one point seven five million would bring the total that you would have, the total you would have on July first next year, if you budgeted the one point seven, would be twenty-two point seven million. Which leaves, meaning you would be short one point six million for the entire project as presented. That includes the contingency of one point million. So if we didn't have any change orders and the project stayed on task, you'd be about six hundred thousand dollars short.
So are we, are we, from a technical standpoint, are we being asked to do anything now? Other than to move ahead? Because we're not going to ask for bids until April of next year. So if we said just move ahead, then you're going to secure bids for the base project or alternates one, two and three, and we're not even going to know what any of those are.
Correct. Yeah.
So we're either going to vote not do this at all, or vote to move ahead. And the decisions that we would make will really come in April of twenty-two when we're presented with the base bids and the alternate bids.
Yeah, yeah, we, we just need to know if, if you, if you do want to do all the alternates, because it does affect the design, affects our consultants and things like that. So if you wanted to make that decision today, we just need to know all that.
Is there a reason why we wouldn't go ahead and get the alternate bids?
I, I don't think so. I think, you know, as you can see, if you waited a year, if you did this last year, you would have saved three and a half million dollars. Okay? Potentially. The more you, the more people wait, longer and longer, things just get more expensive. But I understand that if the county doesn't have the money to do the project, we completely understand. And that's why we showed the shopping list. We weren't sure what, what the budget was for the project.
But to be fair, there is hope across the construction industry that costs will begin to come down.
Yeah.
There is a flood of money, federal money out of the market, which is driving up some of that cost. A lot of it is client demand as well.
That's right.
Interrupted high chains and and all that details. So there's market driven, government driven, there's a lot.
There's a lot.
We don't know what it looks like.
No.
If anyone said today, we know, well, next year it costs three and a half million more, we don't know that.
That's, that's correct.
It could be two million less.
It, it could. It could. Yeah. Yeah.
We, we may not be predicting that, but we certainly can't predict what those bid openings will look like.
Yeah. I, I don't think, I don't think material labor will come down to where it was last year. I think it will come down, but not near as last year. Wood has come down the last month a little bit, which is encouraging. Even paint's up. I mean, our paint went up twelve thousand dollars just for paint.
I was in Sherwin-Williams last week and we were missing Allen. I felt like I did a lot of it.
Yeah. Yeah. It's the byproduct that's in the paint that they're having trouble getting it. So we're hoping after first of the year, things will start to stabilize and hopefully come down to more realistic. And, and we do, our cost estimator has a pulse on what's going on in the construction industry. He actually is a, used to be a contractor, but he's, he works with contractors. He does ninety-eight percent of our public work. He's our lifeline. We're going to do another cost estimate during design and we'll see where we're at. It hopefully will come down a little bit. And if that's encouraging, you know. But to answer your question, I think to do this thing right, the parking lot is not pleasing at all. The aesthetics of the building on the outside needs to be enhanced. I mean, you want to do a nice facility, you want to put a nice meeting hall in this facility, the agricultural offices. I would think you want to do it all at once, because if you don't do it, the parking lot itself with no landscaping, it just doesn't look great. And you want to attract businesses to use this facility. That's the whole thing with this thing and create some revenue back to the county. So to answer your question, I would say, yes, if you can afford it, that would be our recommendation.
I have a couple of questions. What, um, so that was a thousand for the meeting hall, a thousand seated. So what would, what was the, if you weren't seating, if, is it tables, a thousand of tables?
Yeah, table, tables and chairs is four thousand. And then seating probably about fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred and fifteen. Depends, it depends if you do the walls, if you do it all open.
And the, was it NRCS?
Yep.
So that was, I was trying to refresh my memory, that's a federal government group. And they would pay for their own section to be built or we would pay for that?
To refer back to Aaron on that. I'm, I'm not, we're not sure yet if they would pay or the county would pay it.
Yeah, I believe there's a possibility they could pay rent and that it's been a long time, but I think that's the reason it's kind of left out to the side, because if they're not interested, we just would not.
Yeah, they were, they were kind of added at the last hour and we put them on the end, so if they don't go, it doesn't disrupt what we're doing. Okay?
None of their employees are county employees. And so I, I think that they would, would be responsible through a different budget of having their own office.
Yeah, we're not, we wouldn't be required, we're not required to provide the space.
So, so if you don't do that, you just save four hundred and nineteen thousand.
And none of this that you've presented has anything to do on the second level of belts?
Yeah, actually it does. Good question. Mechanical, we're actually, since, since the mezzanine, kind of go back to the floor plan. Think I go back. Maybe not.
If you click in the window, you, you'll regain control.
Okay, thank you. Perfect. Gotcha. Thank you. So the mezzanine comes in about two column lines in about, they're about thirty-three feet on center, about sixty-six feet on the inside. For to get the height into the meeting hall, we're actually cutting back the mezzanine halfway. And that mezzanine would be a mechanical mezzanine. Okay, so we've got new mechanical systems on the mezzanine level. We would have louvers on the outside to get the units in and out for maintenance. Okay? So to answer your question is, we're not using the mezzanine for occupied space, we're using it for utility space and basically MEP stuff. So we'll have some panels up there and we'll have the, the units up there.
So you're giving up part of the second floor to give more height.
Yeah, because if you don't, I'll show you this view. Let me show you. If you don't, you would have a bulkhead here and the ceiling would probably be around ten to twelve feet right here instead of about eighteen feet. So we wanted all the height to be consistent in that area. Does that make sense? Did that answer your question? Okay?
And then the other, I think the last, well, question, maybe discussion. So I think it was alternate three, which is the, the other entrance.
Yep.
Back where the old restaurant was. So any of this presentation, does any of it have anything to do with the the hallway from there back to this area?
That, that little hallway there?
No, the entrance beside JCPenney's.
Oh, right here?
It goes, it goes all the way back over to where it says NRCS, over where Veterans Services is.
Oh, oh, inside?
Yeah.
No, we, we didn't have any interior renovations, just exterior. Yep, sorry about that. Yep.
So I guess my question is, I mean, if we're going to do all this other nice stuff and then they're going to come through this section and then go back to the old mall, then come back to the new mall. I mean, wouldn't we want to try to do that hallway at the same time we're doing the other?
You could, but it's a domino effect, because you know, you got your main spine coming through here in the mall and here. I mean, where would you stop and start that renovation? That would be pretty expensive to do all that, because then you don't know who's going in here, you know, as far as the tenants and all that. I think you would want to do that as you develop and put businesses inside the existing mall.
Well, I don't think anything's going in there. Everything that's going in that section is already there. I'm just saying the floors and the walls and the ceiling to match. Because it's the old tile floor, whatever's out there now. And I don't know, because really the tenants are already in those sections, because everything, you got Veterans Services on the corner, that's going to stay. And then the, the other little section may be a different veterans thing if it comes to pass. So I don't know. I mean, just redoing the war, the floor and the walls and not building anything is that a?
Yeah, we, we could look at it. We could definitely give you a cost on that.
Alternate that.
Basically just a, just a facelift you're talking about inside. Yeah.
So where, where does the remodel, so see, we see the big dog area, which you call that in color, and then the area to the right, they should sort of go along to your, yes.
Yep.
So is, is the light space in front of that area, is that finished off?
Not right now. You're, you're, right now you'd have a new wall with new windows into the agricultural office area. But the mall itself area, that area would not be renovated. Kind of what you have now with elections, basically the same concept.
Mike, what you're saying is?
Well, I was assuming that we were doing the, the whole mall area in front of, in front of the agriculture building, yeah, offices.
Just about this area here. Kind of, we're, we're creating this new, a new entrance. It's the same entrance, but a new visual aesthetic entrance into the mall. I understand what you're saying. Then you come in, then you got the kind of the old mall, then you kind of come in back to the new, new space. You kind of do that now with your two existing spaces that we renovated a few years ago. You kind of have that same concept. But we could, we could look into it for, if you want us to. And maybe there's, maybe there's a, you know, some type of line or some area we could terminate it before we do the rest of the mall or something like that. Yeah, yeah, we could do that, like, right here.
Yeah, because, because we have the, Honor Guard has their spot. And then there's really nothing else there, that little corner shop that's empty. But everything to the left of that's would pretty much be done, because Veterans Service is done. And then if the other veterans thing comes in, then that will be taken care of.
Yeah, we definitely could do that. Again, we always like, when you do renovations, we like the shopping list. And then you can prioritize and decide what you want to want to do within, within the project.
I was thinking, Greg, your founding documents display, you were talking about. The founding documents display that we've talked about, which may tie in with the veterans service area, if we were looking for somewhere to put it.
I mean, I think the point is when you come in, you've got that new, where you're looking for, where you've got some new area of interest. And you're going to walk into that.
Yeah, yeah.
You're going to just remodel this and then you're going to walk to the act, that's, that's going to be the entrance to the act office.
That's right.
And you're going to, you're going to walk through that old nineteen seventies, eighties stuff and then you get to the new act office.
Yep.
Say, wow, how this looks, looks great. You can walk into the new gathering space and say, maybe we really need to
Yeah.
Walk between here and there is going to be.
Night and day.
It's going to be like a free lunch.
Yep. Yep. Yeah, we definitely can look at that for you. Alternate four.
I guess from, I mean, whenever we get to the point of looking this next year, I mean, if we, we got, if we run out of funds, I mean, three and four kind of go together. So if we didn't do three, we wouldn't have three, four.
Yeah, you could do that too. You could do, you could do, you could do all this at a later time if you wanted to. Alternate four, you could do at a later time, say, say phasing. Instead of alternate, call it a phasing, like phase two. If you don't want to do all, you know, renovation here and all the parking lot and just basically stop it here at Belk and then not do anything on the inside and then. and then not do anything on the inside, and then phase two would be to do the outside parking, outside new entrance, and then the inside of the mall.
All right, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if, if you have ever visited a place that has been, uh, changed from an old mall to a new facility. But, um, a couple of years ago, I, I was, uh, in Wilmington, and they did exactly the same thing down there that we are doing here. And it was absolutely beautiful. Now, down there, they went an extra mile and they started moving county facilities in there. They had many of them in their building, um, permitting, um, just a lot of the, the, the county services were in there. But I, I just want us to, and we will, as we talk about this and go forward. This is going to be a facility that's going to be used for many, many years. And, um, I, I do think Mike's exactly right, that we need to look at this as to how the public's going to see it, whatever entrance they come into. And so, um, while these budget numbers that we have are huge for most of us, we're not too far from being able to do this project. And, um, so, um, I just want us to do it right if we're going to do it.
And. Aaron, um, going back to your spreadsheet angle, if you could get us back to your spreadsheet. So our, in our budget for twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, we agreed to, um, pull out fifteen million dollars for this project. We already have a little over six million that we set aside for this. And according to this, and this is what I want to get at, is we have another one point seven million, a million and three quarter, that would be added to that during this, um, July twenty-two.
Yeah, the, the one point seven was added this July first, which brought, uh, the prior number up to six million. Yes, so.
My question is, what we, what we really budgeted was, um, to, to spend fifteen million of what we had, we budgeted fifteen million. And we've, uh, is, is that one and three quarter million recurring every year as it goes into this fund?
It has been going up. Hold on one second.
And I ask that because that's really what's powering our ability, uh, to pursue this project is, is I believe we have one point seven five million coming in for that.
So, so in, um, fiscal year nineteen, we started with one point five million. We transferred in fiscal year twenty, um, one point two million. Twenty-one, which would have been last year, one point four, twenty-two, which is current year, one point seven, which brings us up to six. And then the twenty-three or twenty-two, twenty-three, if you, um, added the one point seven again, um, it would get you to twenty-two, seven, eighty.
But that's, those are recurring dollars, it's going to use that.
Yeah, it's been coming in for three years.
And that's what's helping us fund the fifteen million.
Yeah, it'd be hard to do this project without that savings account that you've been putting aside year after year.
Are you asking in twenty-three is another one point seven going to go in?
If you vote to do so.
But we have been doing it for several years now.
You've been gradually increasing it.
Not like we're increasing the budget by one point seven.
No, you would not be increasing the budget one point seven million, you would not be increasing the budget one point seven five three million if you did it again. Now, if you did one point nine million, you'd be increasing the budget by two hundred thousand.
But we're not using that one point seven to bar the fifteen million?
No, they're, 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 they're separate.
Well, I'll, uh, this is an exciting time, I know for the board, but also I think for the town provides a tremendous amount of momentum on that side of town. I think in the past couple of years, this facility has really showed us, uh, its value, uh, if you look at all the events that take care, uh, take place of things. Plus, uh, with the pandemic this year, we saw how it was used by the community, uh, for health reasons, that's a good thing. I know that there are companies that have told us, man, if we just had a, a, a good meeting place in this community, my company would be here. So for a community our size to have a, uh, an obnoxiously, uh, large facility, this isn't a convention center, um, having a place where we could have a meeting for a thousand people, a table, a thirteen hundred seats, is not unreasonable for a community this size. So excited about this. Like Judy said, I think this will be something that we can be proud of, that will bring activity not only to this community. We've seen that there's a restaurant, uh, that is going in, um, on the common spaces out there, uh, at the mall. And once we begin to see a lot of this activity, I think we'll see more of that. Something we talked about years ago, we can see, um, some more things kind of there, it's, it's different. I, I don't see why we wouldn't push ahead, we budget it, we've agreed to it at this point. Go ahead and ask for all the alternates, and we got, on this, by, we've got, uh, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, ten months. And I think the ten months will teach us what we can and can't do. Uh, because in April of next year, we'll be looking on budget, uh, we'll kind of know where we are, and then, uh, we can, they can choose our, uh, alternates then.
Okay.
Well, if there's no other comments, I, I make the motion, we move ahead with, um, A W.
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No. All right, appreciate you very much, we're.
About we missed you?
Yeah, will do. Thank you, we're excited about it, thank you so much.
All right, uh, EDC, Rod Kreider, thank you for being here. Rod, formerly of Worcester.
Worcester, come on, man.
We're Rod and Scott did, and, uh, since we're here, our first month into the new fiscal year, since we, uh, such an emphasis on, on jobs and economic development, thought this would be a great opportunity for Rod to tell us what they're up to.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thanks, we'd like to give you a little update about some of our activity over the past year and some of the things that will be coming up. Scott and I will be sharing our presentation, I'm going to start it off, and then I'll hand it off to Scott, and he'll hand it back to me. But, um, one of the things that was probably most significant for us last year, as, and we concluded our fiscal year, June thirtieth, as you did, was our move to more of a public-private model of funding for the Economic Development Commission. We felt like, uh, there were some stakeholders in the community that wanted the opportunity to participate, but hadn't been given that opportunity in the past. And as most of you know, we engaged a firm to help us evaluate what the potential for that might be. And they came back with a recommendation, we put together a plan to approach the private sector to help fund the economic growth efforts here in Rowan County. And they, um, responded, um, really, really well. What we have been able to do is, um, is raise just a little, almost, um, one point two, three, nine million dollars to fund our economic development efforts here. That comes from fifty-six different private sector investors across the county. Some made, uh, cash investments in our program, others, uh, gave us in-kind, uh, services to help us with marketing, with, uh, other operational costs. We had set a goal of raising a million dollars, and so we were well beyond that. But we gave ourselves a stretch goal of one point two five million. As you can see, we're about ten thousand off from reaching that. But we expect, um, that over the next couple of months, we'll be able to, uh, close that gap. And, um, as part of that plan, our goal is to do, is to create twenty-five hundred new jobs over five years, three hundred and fifty million dollars in new capital investment, and those jobs creating wages that are in excess of the living wage, which is just under sixteen dollars an hour here in Rowan County. And, uh, we, we have completed our first, uh, full year of this program. Oh, I miss, I'm missing a slide, I think. How do I go backwards? Yeah, oh, well, maybe it's a little farther in here, oh, there it is. So, um, so there was our goal for the year, uh, five hundred new jobs for the year. We ended up with four hundred and ninety-two, and Scott will talk about some of the specific projects. We had a goal of seventy million in new capital investment, we exceeded that with ninety-five million dollars in new capex, um, this past year. And the average wages of the jobs that we were involved with were at just under twenty-one dollars an hour compared to our target of about sixteen. And I did not want to, um, skip over that last slide, I just had it in the wrong place. And I wanted to emphasize here that, uh, our number one priority is working with our existing businesses. Business attraction is an important part of what we do. But ninety percent or close of our existing job growth is going to come from our existing businesses here. And, um, we've made a real concerted effort over the last three years to get to know our local companies, to develop relationships with them. And I'm proud to say that, you know, we, we've come a long way in that area. Last year we did sixty-one company visits, our target is right at sixty, between sixty and seventy a year. Uh, it, it's, it's really difficult to get time on these people's calendars, and so that's, sixty doesn't look like a big number, but it's a challenging effort to try to get that many in place and to sit down and talk with them about what their needs are. And as a result, we're seeing more and more of them now, not only participating with, through our Ford Rowan campaign, but coming to us when they have a need, and that didn't happen, um, with us before. So, um, here's what the four hundred and ninety-two jobs do. We had a company do an economic impact analysis for us at the end of this fiscal year. And four hundred and ninety-two direct jobs of the type that were created has the effect of, of, of adding secondary jobs. So when a new manufacturing, uh, plant comes to town, like, say, Chewy, there's more jobs at the Rushco gas station across the street. We need more, um, retail shops, we need more insurance guys, we need, uh, no, I know we don't need more insurance guys, and we have enough of those, but, you know.
What do you mean, Rowan County?
But anyway, it does create secondary, uh, demand, uh, for jobs. And so that will be another three hundred and ninety-four. And at that twenty dollars and seventy-nine cent average, uh, we expect that the economic activity that's going to be generated is just over thirty, uh, one, uh, million dollars per year. And that will result in, uh, about seventeen and a half million in consumer expenditures throughout our economy here in Rowan County. And you can see below, just an example of how some of that seventeen million dollars breaks down, um, food, transportation, healthcare costs, insurance, housing. Um, it does have a ripple effect throughout the economy, um, at all levels. Hopefully, um, we'll help you close that six hundred thousand gap you need on that last project you talked about too. And here are some of the projects that, uh, that we were involved with. I'll let Scott, um, step up and give you a little more detail on some of these.
Thanks, Rod. The project wins, uh, the new jobs, the new investment that Rod mentioned earlier, uh, was a result of a very busy year at the EDC. So, uh, as you see on your screen, those are some of our more notable wins for the year. You notice a lot of those were existing companies, uh, including, you know, Hexagon Agility, which is one that the board helped bring here back in twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen. They liked it so much, they decided to add on and, and build more, that's always a great sign. But also, you know, Continental Structural Plastics, Snow Joe came here recently, Yndergrove, Max Life, all existing companies in Rowan County. And of course, we landed Eastern Wholesale Fence out there at the old Selene's Plant. FCR is a work from home, um, tele, um, um, I guess, uh, telemarketing type, uh, consumer service, uh, can, uh, you know, just, uh, all kinds of call center type operations at FCR. So that was another one we had that was outside of, um, Rowan County before. But, uh, again, we were pretty busy this past year, and here's some stats to illustrate how busy. You see, we had a hundred and thirty-three total leads. These were all requests we received from a variety of sources, asking us to submit a building, a site, or maybe an existing company that needed some kind of help, some kind of service. But, um, a hundred and thirty-three total leads for the EDC, that's up forty-nine percent from last year. Out of those a hundred and thirty-three leads, we qualified for a hundred and six of them, meaning we had a building, you know, we had a site, or we had a service we could offer these companies to help them expand or grow in Rowan County. Uh, now, the largest source of our leads is, it comes from two sources, the EDPNC, the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina, and the Charlotte Regional Business, Business Alliance. Out of those a hundred and six qualifying leads, about seventy-five percent of those came from those two sources. The remainder came from, uh, sources such as direct from the company, uh, site selection consultant, partner referral, or even EDC outreach. But again, the vast majority were EDPNC or the Charlotte Regional Business Alliance. We also had fifteen company visits, which means we actually had a company official come to Rowan County to look at a site or a building to engage, or to engage us about, uh, expanding or locating their business in Rowan County. And that matched last year's total, which, uh, on the surface doesn't sound like much, but I hope you understand, the first half of the year, a lot of companies weren't traveling due to pandemic, you know, maybe self-induced travel restrictions. So we did finish the year pretty strong, so we were very happy to land those fifteen company visits when all was said and done. Yes, sir.
I know that one of the, this board, which I'm meeting, and, uh, I don't know if you're, this is asking all of us.
I, I think so, uh, Rod actually has some better numbers, I think, on that than, than I do, but he's, uh, been pulling those on a regular basis. But, uh, the fiscal year previous, the eighteen, nineteen year, uh, their leads were down quite a bit, especially in comparison to EDPNC. But this last year, they really turned the corner and the numbers increased dramatically. I mean, that's a pretty accurate statement, right, Rod, for that? Yeah, they merged, uh, it was the Charlotte, you know, Regional Partnership that merged with the Charlotte Chamber. They streamlined their services, uh, kind of, um, I guess, put some people in different places. And it took a while for it to gel, but I think now it is, you know, uh, I guess becoming what they envisioned. So overall, we've been pleased with their, uh, contributions and the cost of our membership for the last year, so. Besides projects, we're also busy with, uh, site development. We think available land is one of our county's greatest advantages, and every year we try to enhance our inventory through, uh, site evaluation services or retaining professionals to generate reports on these properties. The more information that's available on these sites, the more confident that the consultant or the company will be in maybe, uh, streamline, or, um, shortlisting that site for a second visit, or even possibly placing their business here. And, uh, our two power providers, Duke Energy and Electric Cities, provide site, site evaluation services, and we try to utilize those. services, and we try to utilize those whenever we can. This past year, we utilized the Duke Energy Site Rating Program for the Land Fisher property. This is 100 acres there off Hackett Street, near Spencer, across from Innespec. It's owned by Jack Fisher and his family. I think a lot of y'all know Jack. But anyway, we think it's a great site. It's got, again, 100 acres, there's rail there, it's within five minutes to the interstate. We thought that was worth a closer study by Duke. And they did generate a report on the site's development potential and also some nice conceptual drawings on the property. Those were presented to the Spencer Board back in August, and they were very well-received by the board and by the owners of the property. And again, we think that's a great program. We've actually tried to utilize that program every year since I've been here. We actually have the record for Duke Energy for the most years of participating in this program, out of all their surface territory over multiple states. So that's something that illustrates how much we value this program. Also, this past year, we submitted a site in land as for Electric Cities' Smart Sites program. This is 25 acres. It's near the old Parkdale plant on South Main Street. It's owned by Mike Wallace, the NASCAR driver. Again, this was our first year in the Electric Cities program, but this was a very nice experience. They actually paid for all major due diligence reports on the property, Phase One environmental, geotech, wetlands. They even paid for a promotional video for the property, so we were very impressed with that. They're also going to take it to their trade shows and market it, and we worked in, you know, close proximity with the owner of the property, Mr. Wallace, and also his broker. And I think they were, again, very pleased at the findings and the results that came out of this effort. And one thing about both of these sites, again, I mentioned this with the Land Fisher property, but also with the Wallace property, they're both rail-served. That's going to become a very popular request among companies, is to have some kind of rail frontage. And that kind of made these two properties stand out in our minds as far as submitting them to the program for this past year. But besides the power providers programs, we also did some work on our own. We had three sites in the county, the Granite Industrial Park, the Brown property, which is about 115 acres across from Daimler, and also the Land Fisher property. We did retain an engineering firm to do phase-one assessments of all these properties. We're happy to report there were no issues with any of them, so that's one more positive attribute for these sites. So combining those with the Duke program and with the Electric Cities program, we had about 280 acres of land in the county we made more shovel-ready. And as I mentioned earlier, you know, land is one of our strongest attributes, and I think that, you know, we've been saying this for years, but I think this past year is when consultants finally realized that. We've had a lot of interest in this past year, especially over the last six months, on sites in Rowan County. With the exceptions of the exits at Jake and also Innistreet, every exit in Rowan County has some kind of activity going on as far as developer interest or company interest. The four there at the bottom, you know, that are, I guess, more in the southern portion of the county, you know, the one at Webb Road, exit at 152, Old Beatty Ford Road, and even Lane Street, which I know is Cabarrus, but serves Rowan. I think those are probably pretty well documented to this point. You know, North Point has 45 acres there on Webb Road under, actually, it's been closed on now, but we're talking about a large spec building out there. 152 and 85, Silverman Group recently closed on that property for about 1.4 million total square feet in spec buildings. Of course, there's the Canopus Crossing project, but also Fort Lewis Capital Partners is close to acquiring the old Intimidators Stadium site for three buildings with a total of about 660,000 square feet. And again, there's other sites out there as well that have some activity, but combined, this interest represents about 8 million total square feet of new industrial and distribution space in Rowan County. And, you know, obviously, we're very excited about this. We need product to show companies. And really, in the past, you know, when you see some of these stats we showed earlier about qualifying leads, you know, things we were able to submit for, most of those that we were not able to submit for is because we didn't have a building to submit. But now, that may not be the case here very soon. But again, you know, building and sites are very important, but also, you know, workforce is important as well. So I'm going to turn it back over to Rod to talk about workforce development. Any questions from the board about any of the projects we worked on or any of the site development we worked on in the past year?
Just remind us, remind us about how far we've come. When we started, we didn't have any buildings, and we begged folks to build 150,000-square-foot building. We gave them the land to do it, right?
Yeah.
Now, we've got almost 8 million coming our way, and we're not giving away anything anymore.
Yeah, and we usually get at least one caller for a few weeks from developers asking, you know, for land along 85, and it's in short supply now. So it's a good problem to have, though.
Thanks, Scott. Thank you for your leadership. We appreciate you.
Yeah, we had a developer just today saying there are terms where we are land-hungry for Rowan County right now. What have you got that we can take a look at? So, yeah, this is a tremendous development for us to be looking at 8 million. Coincidentally, today was the day that we officially cut the ribbon on the new Imperial Supplies warehouse, which is in the spec building that you guys partnered with, Granite Quarry and Easter Creek Partners on, to develop. And so that was a successful project, and we're seeing a lot of interest in the other land at Granite Quarry Industrial Park as well. And I want to go back and just make an additional comment on the alliance. I think that we've been, we've been very engaged with the alliance throughout their merger between the partnership and the chamber. It has not gone as smoothly as they expected it to be. COVID took a big bite out, the chamber was very relying upon events for their income. They couldn't hold those, and so they had, they took a pretty big cut in their budget that they weren't anticipating. But they've, they've bright-sized, been really impressed with the new leadership of Janet Labarre. She's very open, very transparent, seeking our opinion. I think we've had them out twice, and we've had, we've had a meeting with their board leadership as well. Denise Hallid, our chairman, that serves on their board now, and I am part of the, they have a group called the Economic Development Advisory Committee, which is made up of people like me in all of the 15 counties that they serve. And I am the vice chairman of that EDAC committee, and will be chairman in January, and then, as a result, will join the alliance's executive committee and board, so we'll be even closer engaged with them. And I've given them a lot of feedback about what we need from them and what we expect, and they've been open to all the ideas. So let me go on and talk about economic development is really becoming more about workforce development now. And I think we have been talking about this for a while. I'm glad to report that we are ahead of some other areas in terms of our talent attraction efforts, but you can never really do enough right now. You know, the 8 million square feet of new space is, what, 12 Chewys? So that's going to be a lot of people that are going to be working in those facilities. And so some of the things that we've done, we've really put a big emphasis on this in the past year. Kendall Henderson on our staff has pretty much devotes most of her time to talent attraction efforts. Some of the things that we've done is to develop the Work in Rowan Job Portal. This aggregates information from all across the internet, puts it in one spot currently. Last time I looked, which was about a week ago, we had 2,000 open jobs just in Rowan County available. So we're trying to push this really hard, let people know about its existence, and get people to go to it to look for the many job opportunities that exist here. People just aren't aware of the great companies and the great opportunities that are here. We continue to do our work in Rowan, Wednesdays highlighting one of our local employers and usually open positions within their company. For the first time, we led one of the Rowan County job fairs. That was last month. We had over 40 employers show up, 250 people came up looking for work. The employers were very impressed with the turnout. Some of them said they attended job fairs where only like a half a dozen people showed up, and they were really, they'd been disappointed in the past. So we're really happy there were offers being made on the spot, even drug testing that was occurring on the spot. They were so anxious to hire people. So that was a great success for us. We'll be supporting another one of those, but probably not leading it in a couple more months. We published a talent attraction guide, which is now available to employers and others about people, it really highlights people who have moved here from other parts of the country to find opportunity in their experience, not only career-wise, but from a quality-of-life standpoint. And then we've engaged a company called Roll Call. We've hired them as a consultant to assist us. This is all they do, is talent attraction initiatives across the country. We, they took a look at what we were doing, and they were the ones that really pointed out that we were very far ahead of what others are doing in terms of our working together, our co-branding, the Euroan website, which is a great quality-of-life website. We asked them to come and look. We knew that, we know that there must be some blind spots, some things that we're not seeing. So where can you, where can they help us to do even better than we've been doing? And I think they're coming in mid-September, I think. So we'll be asking you to meet with them when they come to get your input from them as well. And then the other area that we're involved with is, our third major objective is brand identity and storytelling. We're doing a lot in that area, too. We are still overseeing the Euroan marketing initiative that the county commissioners fund, making sure that those dollars are being used wisely. We contracted with Miller Davis, who is doing most of the work, but we also have an advisory committee that is now meeting monthly again now that COVID is over, to help see how we can improve that effort, and more importantly, maybe how we can work more closely together. I'd like to work more with the TDA in terms of some of our advertising. I think there's a way for us to leverage some of that, because the research shows that we're probably not going to get a company to move here unless somebody from that company had visited first, or a friend of theirs had visited here and had told them that it was a good place. And so I think there's opportunities for James and I to work together, to do some joint marketing and help extend our dollars even further. And some of the things that we've been doing, we've been, really made an effort to promote some of the assets. This is the North Carolina Food Innovation Lab. It was, we were featured in Business Facilities Magazine, which is one of the national trade publications for people in site selection community and corporate real estate. We've conducted a multi-channel marketing campaign. The Forward Rowan Campaign allowed us to hire a new marketing communications manager, which has already paid off greatly for us. We've been able to do so much more in the four months that Jay has been on the job with us and has taken a lot off of my plate and Kendall's plate, allowing us to be focused on some other things, too. And so during the time period, we became a Tier One county, as you know. We tried to have some fun with it. We put this advertising campaign together. We got out site selection community. We let them know that we, even though we were Tier One, we wanted to take advantage of that and let them know that there were some, potentially some additional incentives that Tier One status provided us that weren't available in other parts of the Charlotte-Metis region. So that was met well. That was a direct mail campaign. And then, as we heard about people wanting to vacate larger urban areas with higher density, we put together this Suddenly Smaller Can Be Better campaign. It was done in, we did advertising in Business Facilities, Site Selection Magazine, we did direct mail pieces, we did the banner ad-type things that you see there on the left. And recently, now we're moving more towards a proactive effort around what I call the ag biosciences, which is really value-added agriculture. It can be anything. It can be food, it can be other products. We have some great assets here, particularly, again, the North Carolina Food Innovation Lab, but also the Research Center that's here in Rowan County. And of course, we have a lot of manufacturing space. We have a lot of farmland for people that are in the food processing business, and we have a great water capacity. We really haven't taken advantage of the assets that we have, and we're really going to give this a shot, a really hard shot this year, to see what we can get out of it. So we have published this brochure. It is out there. We have, we'll start advertising, Let's Make the Food of the Future. That will start to appear. There's a little top-ranked badge on that ad that you'll see that I can't talk about because it's embargoed, but we are going to be ranked one of the top 10 communities in the United States for our potential for food processing businesses. So our timing is perfect for this. We didn't know that when we put this together. And so we think, and we're also inviting Jay Garner, who is a site selection consultant who specializes in food processing and agricultural-related businesses, to be our speaker at our next annual meeting in October, and we'll be showing him around and trying to take advantage of that as well. So and then just some internal stuff, you know, we were just kind of taking care of business to make sure that we were able to deliver our services in the manner that you, as a stakeholder and investor in our organization, expect. And the companies that we work with and the consultants that we work with just continue to try to be constantly improving how we're doing, what we're doing, the information that's available. We secure a lot of new data sources over the past year because more and more research because of COVID, but it's going to be a long-term trend is being done on the internet. And if we don't have that information available for people to see when they're out searching, they're going to go right past us to another community. So we felt like we had to have that there, and we have those now in place. And we're doing some new data visualization tools to make our website a little more robust in terms of the information surprise, but a little more appealing to the eye as well, in keeping with kind of the way that, that whole marketing initiative, websites in general, are moving. So that's it. That's our overview. We would be happy to respond to any questions that you have.
Rod, I don't have any questions, but I've got a couple of things that I'd like to talk about.
Okay.
Seven years ago, when three of us were here, coming in from the beginning, EDC was funded mainly by Rowan County, and now the public-private funding and raising $1.2 million is remarkable compared to what we all faced. I won't say the three of us, I'm just saying all five of us faced in that point in time, in that the EDC has become much more public and much more accepting for what, for what you do. Thank you for driving that. We got criticized this weekend on an editorial about not bringing enough high-paying jobs to Rowan County. I don't know if, exactly if jobs follow people or people follow jobs, but we need to increase the educational level and skills level of our people in Rowan County. We can do that by working together with Rowan Cabarrus Community College, either on first shift, second shift, whatever you can work out, increasing your skills, and you will get a better job if you do that. And this is all done, and the county even has a program where we will help pay
Exactly.
for sending people out there and going through a program, and you will get a job. There's 2,000 job openings in Rowan County that you just said. It's unbelievable to me that we have 2,000 job openings. You can go get a job, and then you can go back to Rowan Cabarrus on night and get a skill level if you don't like the particular job that you have right now, but you can have a job. And I expect one of the things that is going to improve this county and the jobs market in the future is what you were talking about with the Biotech Center and the remarkable jewel that that is that just has not come to fruition because of many different things in our particular area. But thank you so much for what you've done. You have helped turn this county around with a tax base that increases each year by more than $1 million.
Wow. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support. And I noted that editorial this past weekend also and contacted the editor today to remind him that the average annual wages in Rowan County are higher than the average annual wages in Cabarrus County, the other county that was mentioned in that article, and that our mantra is if you want a higher-paying job with a better quality of life, then come to Rowan County.
Thank you. I hadn't gotten around to that yet.
Yeah, we're, we're about $3,000 average annual wages higher than Cabarrus annually, so. And that's a myth we're trying to dispel. There's a myth that we're a low-wage county, but it's just not true. We have some really great, high-paying jobs at, at all ends and, and, and really, we need, we need all of them. We need all types. We need the jobs where people can enter in at the lowest rung on the career ladder as well as those for people that are maybe higher up on that career ladder. We need opportunity for everybody to make it work. And that's what we've tried to do to the extent that we can control it.
Well, I want to say congratulations to, this is just phenomenal, Rod, Scott, for your whole team. We ran, that was seven years ago, it was pretty dismal and we are just so glad that we've got you as partners to work with and group is in the pudding.
Thank you.
There were a couple of things I wanted to ask about the Roll Call Group.
Yep.
I was really glad to hear that you're working with them. Have they as talent detractors, well, let me just take a step back. This morning I heard a report that talked about why some people are not, quote, "going back to work." I mean, I guess their point was is they're not all couch surfers. And one of the big things was just being able to, as an employee, be appreciated by the, their employer. That's why some of them left, some of them, scheduling and it's, there's a lot of different things. And, you know, as we're moving forward to work, our workforce development, I guess that's one of the things I'm, I'm really curious about is our company culture.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, has that been a part of the discussion at all?
Yes, very much so. In fact, I'm going to give Kendall credit for kind of staying top, on top of some of those trends and what is happening and being able to counsel some of the companies we work with about what some of those trends in the workplace are that our local companies may want to adopt. Sometimes the conversation can turn a little awkward when people say that, you know, we can't, we, we can't find workers, what can you do to help us? But, you know, they want to hire people at $11 an hour or less, they, they, you know, they, there's not a climate-controlled environment for them to work in. It's not a good, they're not good working conditions. There are better working conditions. Maybe I should say it that way. There are better opportunities for people that they can go to, many of them. And we tell them very gently, you got to step up your game. And then we talk about culture and about, you know, are you doing things for your employees? Are you making them feel part of the family? Are you doing barbecues for them or you, you doing, you know, all these other activities that places are doing now? And, and that's gone over really well. I mean, and so whether they're adopting it or not, I'm not sure, but we're, we at least we're be, we're able to talk to them
Yeah.
About how they can improve that
Well.
Situation.
I got to give Aaron a lot of credit. You know, when we started, there wasn't a lot of money in the budget to do employee appreciation.
Yeah.
Like just doing, you know, the parties and the get-togethers and we're going to have another one on Friday. So
Yeah.
You know, that, that makes such a difference.
It's huge to make people feel appreciated. Yep.
The other thing I was really glad to hear you talk about, too, was building community pride, changing those negative attitudes.
Mm-hmm.
Even just from some, some folks that don't live in the city, that think Salisbury is a really bad, bad place and you don't come here after dark and there's so much crime and there's so many shootings and, you know, I don't know how you get, get messaged out just to our local people
Yeah.
Who live, some of their families have been here for generations.
Yeah.
And then just the last thing is when we're looking at working with our CCC, please remember to, to continue to work with our K-12 system because I know that Dr. Moody, at least before she left, I mean, the whole program that they were working on from the perspective of every grade level, you're going to talk about careers in some way.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, to, to get that into, into the culture once again, of our education, but also our companies as far as helping to present those opportunities for the future. I noticed that one of our companies, I can't remember which one, but they were advertising internships and I was just like, yes. Anyway, in the end, the egg stuff was very, very exciting.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's really a great, I think it's kind of untapped here, but we'll, we'll see. We're going to, we're, like I say, we're going to give it a go. In, in terms of image, I can't agree with you more. I mean, as when we did the first branding study, Chandler found that, you know, we thought less of ourselves than people outside of the area did. As that has changed, you know, he came back and spoke a couple of months ago at a chamber breakfast and said that, you know, he did another survey and there's been improvement in that, but we still have a ways to go. And, you know, people are places and places are people. And so you can't really, you know, market a place without the people element involved, too. And I think one of the things we need to look towards in the future is to engage the local community in that process a little bit more. They really haven't had a big voice in a lot of the things that we're doing. And sometimes we do that because it's, it's the expedient thing to do. It's very hard to engage community on a wide-scale basis. And, but I think we need to find avenues for them and particularly in, in, in communities like Salisbury where, and I've spoken with the mayor and the city council people about that, too, and we're, we're happy to assist with that process. And with our CCC, you know, Greg and Jim and I sit on a committee together, working with not only their higher education institutions, but also Rowan Salisbury Schools as a part of that group, talking about all these issues. One of the things that came out of that was what we call the Educator Roadshow. We are now taking the top, the presidents, when they're available, or second-level VPs out to some of these companies and the companies are talking to them, not only about the types of jobs that they have, but what they need out of the education system, both at the K-12 level as well as at the community college and the college level. And that's been very well received by our education community. It's really opened their eyes. We went to Integro, we went to Daimler, we've gone to Hex, Hexagon is next. And so they'll see, they're seeing some of the actual workspaces which they've never been in, you know, and, and.
I think especially with our new manufacturing facilities, you know, getting across that whole idea that when you go and work in a manufacturing place
Yeah.
That it's, you know, dirty and dark and like a dungeon.
Right.
It, that's just not the way it is anymore. So I'm really glad.
Oh, no, they got kitchens, they got fitness centers, they got all kinds of stuff, you know, it's crazy. But goes back, like you say, to culture. So yeah, when they see Hexagon, they're going to be blown away at what that environment's like.
Well, I serve on the Chambers Workforce Development
Right.
Committee while you're on that.
Workforce Alliance, yeah.
But I'm just so glad that we have the, the two folks from the school district, I can't remember their titles.
From CTE, from Career Technical Education? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Holly and Dominique?
Yes. And, and it was so interesting because I, I invited one of our, one of our riders for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, one of our providers to come do a presentation and then they
Oh, okay.
And because what those providers are doing is trying to develop those work skills.
Mm-hmm.
And so we're hoping that we can do more of that.
Okay.
And just throw kids away when they get
And then the last thing you mentioned, we, we engaged the North Carolina Biotech Center of Raleigh, which also has a Charlotte office. We engaged the Alliance, we engaged the research campus, and we talked to them about this initiative. And they were so excited that we were going to be doing that and really want, want to help us. And we had somebody from EDP NCU, also specializes in that industry, engaged with that conversation as well, and they're pretty excited, too. So, yeah, it's really good. All right.
I'm just going to say that, also want to say thanks for all you guys do. I've been a curious, going on nine years, is that's right?
Yeah.
And I've seen kind of both sides of our economic development here in the county and I want to say you guys are very professional. And I've had many members of our business community express those same sentiments about your group.
Oh, good.
And I appreciate that and appreciate you guys stay on task with what you do and don't involve another issue in the county. And we appreciate it and I think we can see how that's paying dividends for us. And you guys do a good job and I appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate your support and we love what we do.
Well, Rod, I can remember a few years ago, Scott and I twisting your arm in a local restaurant and begging you to come here. And we are, I'll, I'll say you're exactly what we needed.
Thank you.
But beyond that, you're a good guy, too.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
If we had gotten a technician that wasn't a good guy, wouldn't be the same.
Right.
But we got both. And so personally and, and as a board, well, we think a lot of, and we're glad you're part of our community and you're, you're just what the doctor ordered.
Great.
And, and, you know, you have taken on more than what you've been asked to. We know that, the Euroanne thing, you know, you've taken that on. You, you've just been a real team player and we appreciate that, how you just, you, you seem to pull everybody together and, and we really did need that. Thanks to the commissioners for funding the Euroanne, that is important. We do have a self-image that we need to get beyond. And so this board has invested some money in advertising. It's, it's interesting. I, I tell the story about, I don't know, six, seven years ago, we were sitting in a room with a whole lot of leaders and I asked the question, who's in charge of marketing Rowan County? And everyone looked around and thought, psh, how did we miss that? You know, and so after that, Aaron and the TDA with, with Craig and, and James Meacham, we did the branding study and from that, Euroanne has come out. We've got folks from all kinds of sectors writing great articles about Rowan County that go out and people Google Rowan County and they see these things now, it's a good thing. And then just lastly, you know, not many folks know about the good work being done by the Education Collaborative. You've got the presidents of both of our four-year college, well, with Livingstone and Kataba, Rowan Cabarrus Community College President, Superintendent of K-12, and at the center of that is Rod Kreider. And so the conversations, we meet every two weeks for a couple of hours. Jim is a part of that discussion. Frankly, sometimes it's frustrating because we're the only non-educators there, so we learn stuff. It's good for us. But then we are also the other side of the equation where we're pushing the education community to not just build their own silo, but everything they do, do with the, the goal in mind of creating more jobs and better jobs and jobs that folks want. And, and then just a special thanks to Livingstone and Kataba. We don't fund those guys, but they're at the table every two weeks. And they're be, the, the whole team of folks is beginning to understand that Rowan County has some, some deficits of education that, that is keeping us from the really high-paying jobs. And so what are those skills that the, that, that K-12 through CTE, that Rowan Cabarrus through programming and that these two four-year colleges, what are some of the skills that are necessary to help really begin to build this new economy for Rowan County? And they, they are all part of a really strong team that is moving education in a coordinated, cooperative direction. And I, I know the community doesn't see what's going on behind the scenes, but let me just tell you, a lot of really good work along with the leadership of Rod is going into that collaborative. And Jim and I have had conversations in the parking lot after these meetings, well, when we were meeting physically. And I remember us discussing one time that of all the stuff that we're involved in, I, we believed, at least at that point, that this education collaborative may be the most important thing that we've had our hands in because it really can make a change for generations in this community. So Rod, thanks for having dinner with us a few years ago.
Yeah, it was good.
Thanks for coming. Scott, you know, Scott was here when we didn't have a director. Scott stepped in and was interim for a while and has really
I also, I almost knocked over the whole wine rack at Lakava, too, that night.
Oh, did you?
If you remember, yeah.
Yeah, well.
It's pretty clumsy. A great way to say.
Yeah.
Made a great impression.
Guys, we appreciate you.
Thank you. And let me just say, thank, I mean, really, you, the commissioners give a lot of credit, too. You really kind of got the ball rolling on all this five or six years ago and set the wheels in motion on not only economic development, particularly workforce development. You guys came up with 100 grand to do the Better Jobs, Better Lives program and that just kind of grew from there into all of these other things that are going on. And the collaboration that exists here is really remarkable. It just doesn't, that our Rowan Education Collaborative, that doesn't happen in any other communities that I know of. And the fact that nobody hardly ever misses a meeting and we meet every two weeks is, is pretty significant, too, to me. So, yeah, would I like to get, you know, our side heard a little bit more? Yeah, I would, but we're going to keep working on that. And in the meantime, we're, we're, we're all learning from each other on how to make this better and that's the important part.
Thank you, guys.
I, I would like to just say that this commission, I can't remember over the last seven years, if there was ever an economic commission, economic development program that came through here that we didn't support. All five of us, we, you know, we may have had a vote that, or two, that wasn't unanimous, but I think all of us appreciate the job that you do and I think we have voted in support of jobs 100% of the time here.
Certainly have. Certainly have. We appreciate that. It's, it's, it's recognized by the companies that we work with when we tell them about the things that you're involved with and particularly your fast-track permitting, that, that speaks a lot to them. It's a great selling point for us and demonstrates your commitment to the business community and growing this community.
All right, Rod, thank you, buddy.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
All right, next item, budget amendments. Motion to approve the budget amendments, please.
Still moved.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, let's move through some board appointments. The ABC Board has an opening. Marnie Hendrick has applied for reappointment. He has served for 12 years in different capacities between the appointments by the City of Salisbury and Rowan County. He's really been a, I don't know, an institution there, so to speak.
Chairman, he's also been in leadership in that, on that board for a long time and they have gone through a lot of growth in the money that they make. The return to Rowan County has, has increased every year. And I would like to make a motion that, that we waive the timeframe there and let Mr. Hendrick come back for one, one term.
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. And then do we have a motion to appoint Marnie then?
Still moved.
Second.
All right, Craig, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, East Gold Hill Volunteer Fire Department Commissioners, John Hamill applied for a two-year term. Let's go through a few of these. And then Granite Quarry Planning Board, Granite Quarry Board of Alderman voted to recommend the appointment of Michelle voted to recommend the appointment of Michelle Reed for a three-year term. The Granite Quarry Zoning Board ETJ, the Granite Quarry Board of Alderman voted to recommend a reappointment of Greg Lowe for a three-year term that'll expire in 2024. And then let's, let's take a motion in a second for those seats, please.
So moved.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Historic Landmark Commission Cameron Sloop applied to fill a vacant seat. And Al Wilson applied for reappointment for a three-year term. Motion in a second to approve those. All right, all in favor, say aye. Home Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee. Nan is the Executive Director for Ruffey Homes. And so the board, she requests the board appoint the following funded providers for a one-year term that will expire June 30th, 2022. Nan Burr, Bureur, sorry, Executive Director for Ruffey Homes. Micah Ennis, Director of Rowan County Department of Social Services. Cindy Fink, Executive Director Meals on Wheels. Valerie Steele, Director Rowan Transit. Christina Joyce, Executive Director Trinity Living Center. And so do we have a motion to accept those five?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Additionally, there are two other at-large seats to be filled and three applications were received. One from Jennifer Hammond, one from Joel Scott, one from Ray Paradowski. Do we have motions from the floor for two of those three? I, I would, I'd nominate Jennifer Hammond and Ray Paradowski.
I'll second that.
All right, second. All in favor, say aye. All right, and then JCPC is asked to appoint Alyssa Harris to this council. Do we have a motion to do that?
So moved.
In a second. All in favor, say aye. Betty Mickel applied for a second three-year term to the library board. Motion in a second for that.
So moved.
All right, Judy and Jim, motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Miller Ferry Fire Department, Volunteer Fire Department, there are three vacant seats on their board. And Clyde Stewart Ash, Joe Scott Luckadoo and Jay Shane Wolford have applied. So do we have a motion to accept those three?
So moved.
In a second. All right, Craig, second. All in favor, say aye. All right, Region F Aging Advisory Committee, there are three seats to be considered for this committee. First, Michael Agee was initially appointed to fill the remainder of a term as an alternate member. He's applied for a two-year term as an at-large member and he is recommended by Nan for the appointment. And then secondly, Alex Bruce applied for a reappointment to a two-year term. And then Eileen Solomon has applied for the alternate seat. Do we have a motion to approve those three?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Rockwell Rural, Rural Fire Department Fire Commissioners, William Baucham and Jeff Holshouser applied to fill two vacant seats. Motion in a second to approve those.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn? All right, Judy?
Financial reports.
Boy, we just jumped right over those, didn't we?
And I have one announcement before we.
Did I jump your reports? Did I ju, did I jump right over them? I'm sorry. These are good reports too. Go ahead, Jim. Thank you, Mike.
All right, I'll make you quit.
The first report, as you can see, is our expenditures through the month of June. So 12 months of the fiscal year. We had 146 million for fiscal year 2021, which is down 2.9 million from last year. Next slide. Revenue through June is at 155.4 million. This is up roughly 9.8 million from last year. Next slide. Of course, our big drivers, property taxes. We are at 88.7 million. And this is through May of this year, which is roughly $2 million higher than last year. And collection rate is at 97.49% through May. Last year at the same time was at 96.79%. Next slide, please. This is our, our fun one that everybody likes, sales tax. We're at 23.3 million, which is up 2.2 million from last year. And the next slide, April, for Randy. This is interesting. We talked in February that February actually was down. Well, March made up for it. March came in at $3.0 million, up 400,000 over last year at the same time.
Any comments? Any red flags? Any?
Well, no red flags yet. I mean, we're, we just keep plugging away.
All right, Mike, have I missed anything else? All right, thank you. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Before we adjourn, Mr. Chairman, I think you all know and, and that I serve on the health board. And the report today about COVID was that the variant G for Delta is sweeping across our country. And in one week, our infection rate has gone up 170%.
Do you know how many cases that is?
Not off the top of my head, Jim. I can get that for you.
I mean, I just wondered, percentages sometimes fool you about what's going on.
Well, this is true. This is true.
What the number of cases was.
I will say that in our county, we went from three to 12 in three days. So this is a very virulent strain of COVID. And I would just really ask those that haven't been vaccinated to think about it, talk to people that you trust, but better a vaccine than COVID itself. And there's plenty of people in our county that have had the experience upfront and personal that can share that, that story with you. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, thank you, Judy. All right, with that, do we have a motion to adjourn? All right, motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye. I'll stay safe.